Open the Select Board Meeting. For Thursday, April 9th, 2020, our only agenda item right now is the state of emergency and we'll start, unless there are specific board member comments with a discussion of the real estate brokers and did everybody receive an email that was circulated last night with the draft?
Yes.
And I don't know, I know the Board of Health has been working with us on this. And we talked about it on Monday night, but I think that there is a need for a further discussion for us to take action. And so I don't know if Lisa or Jen have any, anything to start off with? No, okay, we have. So I guess what's before us is restrictions to place on Realtors. I think a lot of us have been hearing from a lot of residents in the real estate community through emails, certainly phone calls. And it seems especially during this peak time for the virus that additional restrictions on Realtors, you know, conducting open houses and in-home showings, you know, is probably necessary. And were there any, any feedback on the draft that was?
Yeah, I think the, I think the order is good. I think, you know, I mean, obviously it's not something that we want to do, but it's, we have to try to stop the spread of the virus. So my only question was the effective. It says 12:01 a.m. on April 9th, so that would be like retroactive eight hours ago. So I'm not sure if we want to make that be 12:01 p.m. so that it's, you know, in a few hours in the future. But I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Were there any other substantive issues with what was proposed? I know that there were some tweaks to it that some members had.
Yeah, yeah, this is Amy. So I think, I think it was well drafted and thanks for doing that, Mike. I think I'm completely on board with open, open houses. I think that those are, those need to be ceased at least through May 4th, which is the governor's current, you know, school guideline. And if it, if that gets delayed, I think that that should continue. I think your, the mention of vacant homes makes sense as well. I think what I'd love to hear, because I've spoken to a few Realtors in town this week. And it seems to, from what they've said, private showings are few and far between at this point. And when they're happening, they're happening because it's a critical, critical need to either buy or sell a home. So people are financially struggling and need to sell. They have been relocated, things of that nature. So, you know, I just, I want to be careful about putting restrictions on homes that are not vacant. If there is a, if the sellers are, you know, amenable to having people in, but I want to, I would love to hear from Jen and Lisa about, I know the last time we talked about this, we were, they were going to put pen to paper a little bit about some recommendations for showings. So I don't know if there's an update there from, from either of you.
Yeah, I would, I would second that, Susan. I kind of, again, thanks for drafting this, Mike. I was hoping to hear from Jennifer or someone at the Board of Health about, you know, what they found out about other towns and also if they had any sort of, as Amy said, sort of concrete regulations that they might want to propose for these in-person showings.
So I can't speak for Jen and I think she's on the call, but what, what the Board and Health, what the Health Department, I were discussing before is that there is other towns that have put restrictions on their, their, there's many variations of restrictions that surrounding towns have put on. And two of the towns are facing legal challenge and that has yet to be resolved. So part of it is we don't have concrete recommendations because we're not sure exactly where we'll land. Right. In terms of the guidance from the state, I mean, Realtors are considered essential workers. I think the guidance is generally about no, you know, social distancing and, and gatherings of no more than 10. And beyond that, that's where there are some major questions, which is some towns are banning open houses. Some are giving guidance to open houses. Some are banning all in-person showings. So part of this is given that, that things haven't settled. You know, it kind of depends on where this board feels. The, you know, intersection between understanding that Realtors are essential workers and that this, this, you know, you know, there's potentially some pushback from, from Realtors and then also understanding where there is a potential public health issue and then understanding that there's support from Realtors to have this. So I know that you guys, I think you might have received Sven's email to all of us with his, his particular opinion. And I know some of you have been hearing from others as well. So there's kind of mixed, mixed feelings about this. This is not straightforward. So, you know, we don't have concrete guidance per se, but we do think that at the very least, there should be an advisory from the Select Board, if, if not so much an order, giving more guidance as to what we feel is, is good for public safety.
Yeah, I totally, I think that that's from the, all the Realtors I've, I've talked to or heard from, the consensus seems to be that there's, open houses are off the table. I think they're all in agreement that they don't feel that that's appropriate. So I think that that's, that's one check off and just say that from the, I mean, if the other board members agree, I think that that's something I think all Realtors agree on. I think the, from who I, the folks I've spoken to, the, the way that they're talking about these showings is that they'll have, you know, a couple full, you know, gloves, shoe covers, masks, they open the door for them. They go inside, they're not to touch anything. And then the Realtor waits outside and then they meet outside after. So that, those, that's sort of what I've heard from everyone about kind of the process. So I don't know if that's helpful. And again, as I mentioned, from who, those that I've spoken to, showings are really not happening all that much. And when they are, they're really, it's a critical nature from a financial perspective for either the seller or the buyer. So, you know, I think, I sound like I, I, I sound really adamant that we continue to do showings. And I think what I'm just trying to take into account is that there are, you know, again, an essential, by the governor, it's been deemed essential. And I just think that there's, there's factors out, the, the health factor is obviously number one. But I think that there are ways to do it in a safe way with our recommendations and our guidance to continue just the individual showings. I just think that if there's a, if there's an emergency situation where someone needs to sell or buy, I just would hate to have a further effect on their, their hardships at this time.
So I don't think that, that guidance or recommendations is enough. I think we need to have an order. Every Realtor that I've spoken to, except for one, is in favor of placing an order to restrict showings. And I think that it's, you know, we need to have the political courage to do what's right to stop the spread of the virus and, and, and make this disorder effective. As long as the state of emergency remains, that's.
No, I was thinking, I was thinking kind of along the same lines as both of you. I think it's, it's more powerful and cleaner in a way just to ban everything, just say no showings. But I think that gets way out ahead of the, the governor's order. I think it would be appropriate for us or the Board of Health or the two of us together to state some, some limitations on these vacant, to outright just say no open houses, open to unlimited numbers of people. And then say outright that in this, you know, the vacant property in-person showings, you know, limit the number of people to say three or five inside the unit at one time. Say that, you know, all persons should wear gloves and masks. And then that all of the, you know, every time that an agent or broker does this, to just verbally instruct people to try to observe the six-foot social distancing, if, you know, at all possible. Those are the things I came up with. I'm not on the Board of Health. I'm not, you know, really immersed in these things. But those are the things that I would expect to see here if we were to do an order.
Can I just ask a quick question? I think all the comments from my colleagues are excellent. You know, Amy's, Mariano's and Susan's as well as Mike's, but I just wanted to ask a quick question from our town manager. When, I believe if I understood you correctly, indicated that there have been some suits that were triggered by some town efforts along these lines. Could, would, would those suits essentially be along the lines that the town can't exceed the governor's list of essential businesses? Because I'm kind of curious if that is the case or if there's some other, maybe that could help guide us with some of the options that we may consider. Thank you.
Yeah, Jackie, that's my understanding is that it's, it's based on interpretation of the governor's list of essential businesses and whether the, I don't know if it's Somerville and Medford. I have to, I'm sort of looking at my notes to see which, which towns exactly. But it's the towns that banned, that banned everything, you know, banned all in-person showings, not just open houses.
Okay. I mean, obviously we don't want to trigger litigation, not that we don't think that there is good reasons for concern here as Mariano was indicating. And, and maybe an advisory is something we should consider so that we don't trigger litigation. Although it wouldn't take care of the issue that Mariano was suggesting, but I'm certainly sensitive to what Amy and Susan have pointed out as well. It seems like we should perhaps consider doing, do something because our Board of Health has asked us to. And then the question is whether or not we should be guided in what we do by some of these other realities and not wanting to trigger a suit. It seems like time's kind of important here that if we get more information and roll this into Monday, then we're possibly not doing something over the weekend, which otherwise might be an active period. So I'm not sure if the board has a consensus that we should, if we're going to do something, that it should be today. Thank you.
I mean, we're trying to stop, you know, people from dying. So if there's one Realtor who wants to challenge disorder, then they can, but I think our responsibility is not to avoid some Realtor going to court to stop us from trying to prevent people from dying. Our responsibility first is to protect the residents and that's my view. So I think we need, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the, that we release the emergency order of the Select Board and Board of Health to prohibit in-person showings of real property as presented to this board with the amendment that it be effective at 12:01 p.m. April 9th instead of 12:01 a.m.
Okay, is there a second? So I'm going to second it and then we're going to move on to discussion about it a little bit further. One thing that I will say is it's a complicated issue. And the, the Realtors had a call on Friday, a large group of them. And there seemed to be consensus around a couple of things. Some Realtors were using this opportunity of limited access to showings and homes to say, we're the Realtors that can get this done for you. Come to us, give us your business. We'll go into the homes, we'll do risky things, we'll do all the things that these other Realtors feel uncomfortable doing. So that's part of it. It's not just that we can tinker around with something that's advisory. We have very limited enforcement capabilities. We're not looking at a list of homes for sale and sending members of the Board of Health around. So a lot of the Realtors are looking for this guidance so they can feel that they can say to their clients, hey, I'd love to do this for you. I'd love to have this showing or, open houses, I think are off the table for anyone. I'd love to have this showing for you, but I can't because there's this order in place. Certainly, I think that there should be a mechanism for an emergency, you know, situation where somebody is looking to go into a home to check it out. I mean, there's quite a bit of capabilities of viewing homes through the interior and exterior through video. And certainly people can still drive by, but you know, this is a little bit different than, I think from, in most situations than just going to the grocery store, going to the pharmacy. It's a different level of necessity. And certainly, you know, to Amy's point, there are those situations that, you know, that are necessary for people where they are in a difficult circumstance. But I think what has failed for most responses is when communities kind of just tinker with very small incremental advisory opinions on things. Because as we've seen, when we started doing that, nobody cares and nobody follows. And we have to have our police going around, you know, fields to, with a bullhorn to tell people to get off. So to the degree that, you know, there's a level of seriousness that's elevated over the next couple of weeks between now and May 4th, I mean, I think there's an expectation amongst the broader members of the, the community that we, we do take more decisive action. I, I personally don't feel a advisory is, is going to be, you know, helpful much, nor do I feel like this order is going to put anyone out of business. And, and let me just say as well, since it has been mentioned, you know, I'm a Realtor, but I'm not a, I don't, you know, practice very regularly in that, in that territory. I do one or two, you know, sales a year for, you know, clients and typically I'm not, I don't list or do showings and things like that. So that's not a factor for me personally. So I don't know if there are additional comments.
Yeah, I have one. And that is that to some extent, these are individual Realtors who are doing these showings, looking for some sort of something to back them up, to protect them, you know, we're looking to protect the health and well-being of our own citizens, our own residents of Winchester. And I, you know, I would be loath to incur any further litigation risks or expenses. But I think that during this unprecedented time and we're all trying to do the best job we can, I think if we issue something that is a joint order with the Board of Health, that isn't just a blanket, open-ended, strict ban of something that the governor's state of emergency would really permit. You know, if we, if we tailor this to the need to protect health and limit the transmission of COVID-19, I, you know, I'm thinking we should be, we should be a little bit braver and bolder and actually, you know, put something in place. I also think it should be, it should be more explicit about what people can and can't do. So that it's not like, again, kind of open-ended and people can interpret it any way they want. And then we, we do have limited enforcement capabilities. It's true.
I'm definitely sensitive to these important comments and the concerns that Mariano has, has raised. I guess just super quickly, Lisa, is it, Ms. Wong, are you, is it your impression that many towns have, not that this is determinative for us, but I'm just curious, that many towns have issued something along these lines? I'm just kind of curious. Again, it's not determinative, but.
That's a great question. I mean, I was actually just trying to Google to see if there was any articles on this or if any other towns did it, or even if there was any further news about Somerville or Medford. And I have found nothing actually on it. So I, I don't know.
Another option, what we could, what, another option, what we could do because of the, you know, important concerns that have been raised. We could consider something that has a, like a endpoint or that we reconsider or can continue to consider by a certain point or something like that. So that those in the field aren't concerned that this is kind of indefinite or may
I think having that, of May 4th is, is probably appropriate considering that there's a reason for that.
Yeah, the order, okay, and it has May 4th as the date.
Right, no, I know, but it says at least May 4th. So it's not, you know, I'm not necessarily saying we should take out at least, but it might provide some clarity that might be needed because that's only like three weeks. So obviously this board could consider extending that date, even if the words at least are removed. But that might be helpful for the industry to know so that they could, you know, consider scheduling in June or something like that. I'm not saying that's.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I think it would be helpful to remove the words at least. You know, we can just say until May 4th.
Yeah, because it's not that long of a period of time. Yeah, thank you.
And then, you know, we'll have meetings before that if we need to extend it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that because that's the date of the, I guess the governor's order too, right?
That's correct.
Yes. Do you want to keep the language about or until the order is lifted?
I, I mean, I think at any point as a board, we can lift the order, right? Whether the language is there or not. So it doesn't make a difference.
Also true.
Was there any further clarification on the language that anybody wanted to make and they want to be mindful to? I know Mariano has to jump off on, call it nine, so.
So can I amend the motion? You know, to add an explicit prohibition of open houses to unlimited numbers of people? And then add the reasonable regulations intended to limit the risk of transmission of COVID-19. No more than, maybe three people is not enough, no more than five people in a dwelling, in a unit, no more than five people in a unit. All persons entering the, any, any unit would be wearing, must wear masks and gloves. And that agents and brokers would instruct all persons at these in-person showings of vacant property to maintain six-foot distance, social distancing at all times if possible.
The social, the social distancing shouldn't be if possible because they should be doing that. But otherwise, those comments seem helpful. Susan, thank you.
Okay. This is Jennifer. Can I just suggest, could you add just more broad language and defer to a, a public health document that I could draft with those particular details? That would be probably more advisable if you're open to that.
Yeah, that sounds good. Susan, are you, are you okay with, so it would say something like vacant property may at the party's discretion be individually shown to potential buyers following all the recommendations from the Health Department for, to stop the, the spread of COVID-19?
Yes. So that's the amendment, I guess.
Okay, any further comments on the amendment or the underlying motion? Okay, I'll take a vote. We'll do roll call vote. And, and I'll just, as I said before, go around as a, as a seal on my screen. So Susan?
Yes.
Sorry, all in favor, Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
And just to confirm before I vote, so this is going through May 4th at this point.
That's correct. I, I think actually the, the harder part for us, even though this is a difficult decision, is when we get to that point of May 4th of whether we continue it or not, if it, if it's approved, right? Because, you know, at least we have the, the knowledge that at a larger level, that this is a more critical time and there's higher risk. So, so, you know, we have that in front of us as well.
So to Amy, I'm thinking we're taking out the at least, so the order shall remain in effect until May 4th, 2020 at like 11:59 p.m. And that then gives an exact time so that people are understanding exactly what it is. And then we'll probably have a meeting on the 4th, right? So if we vote to extend it, then there won't be a gap.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm incredibly torn because I, obviously the health of Winchester residents are, is of utmost importance. I'm just, you know, if I think about grocery stores and things like that, obviously those are essential businesses as well. I just think for some people it is as well. And I'm not talking about the real estate agents. I'm talking about the sellers and buyers that need to have a place to live and have huge financial stakes in this. So that's, that's what I'm struggling with, to be perfectly frank. It's not that I don't have political courage and it's not that I want anyone to be, get sick or spread this virus. That's not at all what I'm saying. I just have been thinking a lot about this and I, that is the part that I'm struggling with. So I think I'm just, I'm going to abstain.
I, I think also, well, that's fine. We'll just keep going around. Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
I am a yes vote, but I wanted to thank Amy for her comments and the way she articulated them, which I definitely share in her concerns. I'm hoping that, as everyone is, that things will continue to improve. Well, I shouldn't say continue, but that things will improve so that May 4th may be the date. But I'm certainly sensitive to the other comments from the board members as well. But I do appreciate Amy's comments because I think they're important, but I am a yes vote. Thank you.
And it's a yes for me as well. So the motion with the amendment passes for oh, one with one extension. And I think, you know, the guidance from the Board of Health will help. And my understanding from Jen, and you can speak a little bit further to this too, is that the, the Board of Health is going, is issuing this in conjunction with us. So, you know, we're moving forward together. I think that is, is helpful. It's not just one of us that's kind of jumping out of our lane and being more aggressive than the other. It's, there's been, since Monday when this issue was raised until this morning, there's been quite a lot of discussion and thought, so.
Actually, Jen, can I clarify, is the Board of Health actually meeting to vote on this? Or should this simply say the Health Department? Because I think it's, it's, the terminology is important, whether the Board of Health is actually voting or whether this is coming out of your department. No, they haven't voted on yet. They certainly can, however, in their declaration, they did defer to me to take, you know, whatever action I deem necessary to be protective of the health. I put Carrie's name on there thinking that they may want to, since this is more a, well, it, it has a lot of, a lot of political implications, quite honestly. So I was going to give them the opportunity to do that. The vote.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if there are any other updates under the state of emergency agenda. Lisa, was there anything else that we need to discuss or are we in good shape?
So I just want to bring up a couple of things that we'll probably talk more on. So a couple of things we're running into. So one is water. So a couple of things we're running into. So one is water and sewer bills. So so the deadline, so the deadline for the water and sewer bills, I actually don't exactly know what the deadline is, but the 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 legislation has extended the ability to pay your water and sewer bill without penalty or fees until June 30th, or water and sewer bills are due before then. So we've got this issue where if we put the original due date in Munis and people pay after that due date, then we have to go in and individually manually adjust every single person who pays late. The, so the only way to automatically not have to do that, which is a ton of work, is to set the due date in Munis to June 30th for water and sewer. So Munis is now also linked to what goes to the printer. So if we put the June 30th date in Munis, it will print on the bills as June 30th. So technically, the board has not voted to move the date to June 30th. You've simply just adopted the legislation that allows for the waiving of penalties and fees. So it would actually, and it, so that's an internal decision in terms of setting the date for water and sewer. And the reason why the water and sewer rates weren't set in the legislation like real estate is because water and sewer is is completely set internally, right? You could have it monthly, you could have it quarterly. So that's why it wasn't in legislation. So it's actually within this board's jurisdiction to move the date of the water and sewer due date. So I I would highly recommend for staff purposes and just ease of understanding for everybody to move the water and sewer due date to June 30th. So if you're, I know, I know, like Mariano just dropped off. You know, so we could certainly do that on on Monday, but it's, you know, unless you feel comfortable doing that right now.
Yeah, can we, I mean, is is there opposition to doing that? It seems like it makes sense. Okay, I'll take a motion to move the water and sewer due date to June 30th.
Well, is this, Lisa, is this the third quarter, fourth quarter? What what quarter is it? Water bill that we're moving? Sorry.
What quarter are we in?
It should be the present water bill that's coming out.
Okay, well.
Yeah, the one.
This is the one that's going to be, that they have to go to the printer by April 15th.
Okay, so, yeah.
This, this, like, discussion is, like, literally happening four minutes ago. So.
Okay. So if it's sufficient, yeah, just so moved.
Yeah, it would be helpful to know now versus the 13th. Okay.
Okay. We'll take a roll call vote then. Jackie?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So it carries unanimously four oh. Mariano is no longer on the call. He had to jump off for work. So and like anything else, we may be back at this on Monday because, you know, it's it's evolving. So but I think it's it's good to get some of those housekeeping things out of the way. Was there anything else, Lisa?
Yeah, just just two more mostly notifications. So our law firm, Anderson and Krieger, has been working with our bond counsel, not just for Winchester, but basically for everybody that they represent, to draft some legislation to clarify remote town meeting for representative town meeting. There's about like, I think, 50 communities that have representative town meeting, including Winchester. So right now, if we chose to do remote town meeting, then there's a question of legality about any votes pertaining to borrowing. So the legislation that's being drafted right now would, and we just received the draft legislation to take a look at last night, so I haven't thoroughly looked at it. But it's supposed to eliminate that particular issue so that if we had remote town meeting, we could, you know, we could take those those votes and have them be legal. So I just want to let you know that that's that's out there. I'm going to review it and bring it to the board for your discussion on Monday. The other thing that is sort of late breaking news is I sent you an update on about the the MBTA working meeting we had. So the day after the working meeting, the MBTA wrote me an email and said, oh, we forgot to mention that about 42 to 45 of the spaces on the Abra Jonah lot are within the MBT right of MBTA right of way, and we intend to either temporarily or permanently use those spaces, which means that it might block any use of the the town to use those for spaces, period. So there really wasn't any explanation of why they need to use those spaces or why they would be temporarily or permanently blocked. But it was a very disturbing email that I thought I needed to share with all of you. So we're certainly taking a look at the documents to figure out what our ability is to, you know, I think, work on that issue. It might be a political issue more than a legal issue. And I'm trying to see clarification on why exactly they brought that up at this time, you know. So for example, are they thinking that because the ramp is being moved that the, you know, the the extent of the construction is that they would block access to those spaces because they, you know, they they need a larger footprint for construction? Is it that they plan to use that more of a lay down zone? I don't understand if the permanent was just thrown in there for for, you know, because it's part of their legal jargon, but it's something that they just sort of dropped on us yesterday and we're trying to figure that out as well. So hopefully I'll have more information for you one Monday.
And the other item two is the United Way. We had a meeting the other day about kind of moving forward. So I think we're finally at the stage where we're ready to launch that very soon, which will, you know, take all of us to promoting it and getting the word out. I I think it'll, it's in a good place. Lisa, did we say what day or anything that we are going to launch that or? Actually.
No, we we did not. I I think we're waiting to see a draft press release, so I don't even know if that's coming today. I I think it, we'll take a look at it and then we'll figure out what makes sense in terms of the launch. It might make sense to do it next week. I think Thursdays and Fridays and weekends are really tough days to launch something like that. So we could have the weekend to work things out.
Can I ask a question related to the state of emergency? And I I haven't really been immersed in understanding how the state reimbursement for our costs, your additional costs to respond to this might be done. Maybe you could, maybe on Monday, just kind of update on what what we're doing. I just want to be sure we're, you know, keeping records and and keep track of how, you know, filing for those reimbursements in a timely manner, just to be sure that it's going to affect our budget next year, if not sooner. So that'd be great. Thanks.
Good question. Sorry.
Yeah, Mike, we should note, so if anybody happens to be going through downtown, you'll see that the the black signs are up on many sawhorses for the, that the DPW put up around the delivery takeout zones.
Good.
Great.
Great. Are there any other comments or questions? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I vote yes for oh. Thank you for everybody coming together, another early morning meeting to get some work done. And we'll see you soon. Thank you, Patty.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you.